Mike Jack.
Working.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. But why am I blurry? Hmm. That's not good. Am I blurry with for everyone else?
Yes.
Hmm. There we go. Missing Joe and John, I see. Hello, Madeline.
Hello. How's everyone doing this evening?
Doing good. Patty, I know I need I need to talk to you.
Just got another listing, so move through this. I'll send you an email. I just got just a little bit more.
Okay, shoot me an email.
It's always more information, right?
Yeah, exactly.
I just saw I have an email from the from from those folks, so I'll see what it is and I'll shoot it to you right after, so it's not too distracting.
It's okay. I don't know how much you realize how much I read.
Enjoying being that distraction. Okay.
So there you go. I see Linley's on.
Are we live on Facebook, Burke?
We are.
We are, okay.
Little early on that, but it's all good.
You see all those names.
Okay, let's give it a minute or so. Wonder if my camera's going on me, folks. Okay, we're 5:02 and we have a really packed night tonight, so I'll let John know he'll hopefully be here shortly. There he is, perfect timing. At this time, I will call to order the Brooklyn City Council work session for May 25, 2021. Call the roll. I'm here.
Councilmember Lindley Jones, District One. Did she she's present? Councilmember John Park, District Two.
Here.
Councilmember Madeline Simmons, District Three.
Present.
And Councilmember Joe Gabia, District Four.
Present.
Great, thank you.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Any opening remarks from anyone? If none, we'll go right into department reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. We will dispense of accounts or department reports today because of the busy agenda. But our Director of Strategic Partnerships, Patty Hanson, does have a minor report that we need to make for the record concerning our consolidated plan with HUD. Patty?
There we go. Yes, thank you very much. Just a quick notification that HUD did a new, let me see, new CDBG allocations for 2021 nationwide. It was a small bump for us, just in the area of $5,343. The great news is it's a little more money, every bit counts. And the greater news is that this does not trigger a substantial amendment. It just means that I need to notify you all that we have used the administrative privilege granted to the city mayor to put this towards your council's first priority, which was family stabilization, specifically childcare initiatives. Of course, if any member would like to bring it back to council, we will certainly be happy to do that. We wanted to notify you at the work session, which is what is required. And if you'd like to bring it back, we are happy to do so. But we are gonna, if not, we are gonna go ahead and modify the plan. This amount will be included when we receive the consolidated plan approval and the HUD agreement later this year. Okay, if there are any questions, I'll take them, but that is that is the entirety of my report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? I see no questions. I while we don't have department reports, I know there's some council questions for department heads. And so I'll have, I know there's a few questions out there, so. Go ahead, Madeline.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions for Brian. Is Brian here? I don't see him on my screen. Oh, there you are. Hi, Brian. How are you?
Hey, Councilmember Simmons, how are you?
Good, thank you. So I know that we've got the city pools are going to be opening soon and everybody is really excited about that. And something that we had inquired about was whether or not we could have longer hours on Sun.
Oh, no.
Day and or sooner rather than 1:00 PM. And it's my understanding that there's there's some resources issues with having longer hours. And I wanted to know, you know, potentially if there's something that we could look at to try to make that happen in the future, if that's not something that we can do in the immediate and and if, you know, that's not something we can do in the immediate, if we see it being an issue to move up the time and by one hour and then just close one hour earlier, so we're not actually adding any extra hours to the lifeguards or the workers.
Um, to answer your question, Councilmember Simmons, we've looked at that and I've spoken with Christian about this a little bit offline. We're we're gonna wait till we see what the millages come in at at the end of the month and then if we if need be, we can always do an appropriation then to for additional funding to cover additional hours at that time for extended pool hours during the rest of the summer through the end of July. Because once we get into August, when school starts back, we'll just be doing weekends only.
Okay. Do do we think it would be an issue to move the if there was, you know, council support for it, to move the opening time up from 1:00 PM?
Madeline, you you broke off.
Yeah, if it's it's the same number of hours, just moving sliding it forward or backwards, there's no fiscal impact. Council wants to do that, we would just just three informal nods of the head in this meeting would do it.
So I think she's not here. But I think she was asking, you know, instead of 1:00 to 6:00, go from 12:00 to 5:00. Does council have any? Yeah, Joe.
So if we would open up an hour earlier and stay open an hour later, how much would that be? How much of a budget adjustment would that be for the extra hour?
I would have to check with our pool management company with the lifeguards and our pool managers.
Can we just do it on a percentage of total budget and give an estimate?
I would I would not want to fathom that guess right now, Councilmember Gabia. Let me look into that and I can get you an answer.
Okay.
I mean, I've done some, I've looked at our other neighbors around us that have pools. We're open if equal amount or if not more hours than most of our neighbors in Roswell, Alpharetta, Tucker, that have pools. So they close their, some of these cities are actually closing their pools one day a week for pool maintenance, where we're open seven days a week. So it's from us from an hour standpoint, I feel like we're giving our citizens the maximum amount of hours that we can right now.
So the the question is, is if we move the hours from up and close earlier or start as they are? I mean, it goes from 1:00 to 6:00 or 12:00 to 5:00. Does any council have any thoughts on that?
Or 12:00 to 6:00.
That's extra money, but we currently we can make the change 12, go from 12:00 to 5:00 to 1:00 or 1:00 to 6:00 at the at the current budget. So guys, do you have a preference? Or keep it where we are, where Madeline would is suggesting, and I know we talked and now I'm speaking for her, if she tries to get back in. And there she gets coming back in, but she would prefer to move to 12:00 to 5:00. There you go. Hey, Madeline, we're still on pools.
Okay, I'm back. I don't know. I'm on my cell phone now. Something's up with the internet at my house, but. Yes, so I'm not sure if my my question made it out there, but I think that the mayor wrapped it up for me. I was wondering, can we just shift up an hour? That seemed to be the consensus from all the neighbors that have been contacting me and I gave them fair warning that it might be a resources issue to where we can't, you know, stay open until the same amount of time we stayed open, but everybody seemed to be okay with shifting up one hour.
I don't have a problem with that. I would say that as soon as we find the money and we expand the hours, I mean, there's been a lot of I think there's a lot of pent up demand for pool usage, so I would, I think even more so than previous years. The increase hours would get more usage than in the past, so I would rather get ahead of it, you know, the the demand and go ahead and create that supply for the hours of the pool. Whenever whenever staff feels comfortable that we can do it.
So, you know, when Brian and I talked about this earlier, it was really early in the fiscal year, we don't have our major revenue source actual in yet, hope to get in the next couple of weeks. If the council wants to move forward tonight on extend extending the hours, it's just the understanding that we would come back at a later meeting with an appropriated appropriation adjustment to increase Brian's budget for the labor. I don't want to say it's not going to bank break the bank, but I don't want to put it on the department to have to manage an increase in his expenses without the appropriate appropriation.
I will be in favor of the appropriation.
Yeah, me too.
Me too.
Me too. This is this is the time to do it because it's, you know, four days before we open the pool, so if we're gonna do it, let's do it now.
Great. So would that be something that we do as a new agenda item or?
I I think this is enough direction on the call right here. I mean, it's an operational matter. Our natural hours aren't technically policy. I think we've gotten clear direction from the council and we'll proceed accordingly. When we get a hard number, we'll come back to the council with the supplemental appropriation.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
I just want to make sure. So starting this weekend, we'll extend our pool hours on Sunday from noon to 6:00, right?
I mean, I think if it's within the budget to do 11:00 from 6:00, that seems to be what the community would like the most, but of course, whatever we can can do that's extending, you know, would.
I just need to be able to tell, be able so we can put a press release out and let our pool managers and our management company know kind of where we're going to be at starting this weekend. So because all along, we've advertised, you know, Sundays, 1:00 to 6:00.
Yeah, if it's possible to 11:00 to 6:00, I think that that would be ideal for the community.
Okay. All right, go, go. Okay. And I think there was another question, Madeline, you had Patrice.
Yeah, I had a quick question for Patrice, and I hadn't had a chance to touch base beforehand on this, but I think we had previously talked at a a while ago about a invasive species or plants ordinance kind of separate and apart from the tree ordinance and ordinance to address, you know, kudzu and those kind of bamboo. And I was just wondering if if we're still planning on doing one of those and and when we expect that will be.
I think that we'll probably be able to incorporate that into the tree ordinance rewrite. I need to talk through it with Jeff a little bit more to see exactly how we would be able to address it. If not in the tree ordinance, then we have a couple of vegetation kind of sections and the nuisance section that we probably can put it in, but I will follow up with an email to let you know exactly the timing of it.
Great, thank you. Like I said, sorry, I had a chance to touch base with you, but congratulations to you. To everybody that didn't know, she just recently graduated with her JD.
You.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Anything else, council, any other questions? See none, moving on to your order to rewrite. Patrice, come on back.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna share my screen and I'm going to try to eyes rather quickly, just to make sure that we have sufficient time for any questions that you may have. So today we'll kind of, I won't go back through the purpose of the project. Obviously, council has this project based on input from the community over the last couple of in August, we brought on Jeff Gattesman as our Tree Canopy Preservation Program Manager, and he's really been guiding that new division within the department to get this project completed. So we started the process with a community on the project website, and these are a sample of some of the questions that were included that the community was able to respond to during the first month or so of the project being kicked off at the beginning of the what we heard generally was, and based on the ideas while the virtual forum and the map on the project website, we received comments and for general areas, some related specifically to the ordinance, then we also received received comments and programming, PERC-specific recommendations, and then also comments about individual private properties where there were concerns about the potential for future tree removal. So the draft rewrite was made available on the project website in the middle of April, and the major highlights of the draft that it is full rewrite of the ordinance, we've updated and added some new definitions, revised the regulations related to minimum tree density and tree protection during construction, and also remove allowance for alternative compliance. These are some of the comments that we received back on about the initial draft. We reviewed these in detail with the Planning Commission at their meeting at the beginning of May, and they have provided comments based on the discussion that was held at that meeting. So I'll skip ahead and if council has specific questions about these items, we can come back to them. But from those comments, the Planning Commission that we increase the recompense amount from $200 to $240 to be consistent with the City of Atlanta. They also recommended that we increase the recompense cap cap from 150 inches to 200 inches. And they also support the idea of placing the proposed tree removal sign in advance of the removal. I think the community was recommending three to five days ahead of the removal. And so these were all of the comments that planning as it related to the draft. So as far as the next steps today, obviously, we're here presenting this at the council work session. The item will go back to the Planning Commission at work session on next Wednesday. Again, the Planning Commission doesn't have authority in the ordinance to address the tree ordinance, however, because of the types of projects that they review, we important that they would have the opportunity to review and provide comments on the draft, so we'll take that back to them at work session again next week. And then we'll bring it back for adoption, and I apologize, my slide has the incorrect date. It'll be June 29 for adoption consideration by the city council. And I just wanted to say too that based on the comments we received from city council today, we'll combine those with comments received from the city attorney, from Planning Commission, and update the draft and release that on the project website, as well as through the planning commission packet for next week. And that was everything that we wanted to go over today. Jeff is available as well on the meeting this evening, if you all have any specific technical questions.
Questions.
Patrice. So as far as giving our input in work session, is this, we have another work session, do we have to do that or is this the only one?
This was the only one that we had scheduled.
Okay, well, I'd like to, I have, I have, I have a bunch of questions and I would like, you know, council's support on on certain direction for for the draft. So if we can get through this today, great. If not, you know, i- if not, then we'll I'd like to schedule one other work session and maybe push it off just two weeks for another one. But I'll just want to just start with some of my questions. So are we thinking that as far as the recompense that we'll go ahead and go up to 240? And what was the the cap that we were going to increase it to 200? To so the the $200 per BBH for recompense for the specimen trees?
The that's number would increase from the current 200 to $240. The inches would increase the maximum cap inches that you would have to recompense for. And Jeff, correct me if I'm saying wrong, would increase from 150 inches to 200 inches.
Is there a re, what is there a reason we can't even, I know we need to have a cap of some kind, but is there a reason why we can't even go up to 300?
I will probably defer to Chris on that because that's at a certain threshold. Chris could probably speak to that better than me. It it could be interpreted as a money-making enterprise.
There's two concerns to be. I'm sorry, Councilmember Park, there's two concerns to be to to be addressed in response to your question. The first one is there's no current appeal right in the code to the administrative charge. So if you increase the number, then we need to start thinking about there being a due process right for that to be reviewed and objections to be heard. Excuse me, in response to the the additional cost. The second thing is is the what exactly what Jeff said. We are only allowed to recover reasonable costs associated with the program. Otherwise, it becomes a a a tax, and we are limited in our taxing authority. So the the fine line to walk here is to address what the intangible value of tree canopy is versus the the loss of that canopy and how you provide appropriate recompense to the city for that loss of canopy. I don't know where that line's going to be, but the further north or the further past our neighbors you get, the more likely it is we're going to get sued over what that number is.
So would you feel comfortable at 200?
$300 per inch with a cap, I think I could probably live with. I could probably defend as well as the 240. The challenge is going to be if, as some people had mentioned, and some people had mentioned in some of the comments that comdev had gotten, is removing the cap altogether. So what I would ask you is if if that's something that you want to want staff to consider, I think we need to schedule staff time with you to discuss where you are and where what you would like to accomplish so that we can offer our best advice about about what that is. And I don't really want to discuss it in public because it would concern litigation strategy and legal theories that I don't want to necessarily be in the public domain.
Okay, I think if we match the dollars per inch, which is 240, which is Atlanta, I think we're safe doing that. So and I'm comfortable with that. And I think
Yeah.
And 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 as far as the cap, you know, if it's 240 per inch per acre, and if the cap were to be 300, that would be, what, 70, you know, 72,000 dollars per acre. So if it's a if it's a half acre lot, you know, the developers would be paying 37,000 instead of, you know, 15,000 or 16, what's happened, 37. You know, 18 and a half thousand. I think I think that will be a fair recompense with that cap. You know, for for moving that many specimen trees, you know, it it will it will give them cause. I just look at it from, and also as far as a tax point of view, you know, I look at it as kind of like a sidewalk fee, right? We at it as kind of like a sidewalk fee, right? We, 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 we don't put it into a general fund, right? We specifically use it for tree canopy maintenance. And right now, we're, we're out of money in the tree canopy funds, in the tree management fund, so I don't have, I don't have a problem increasing it, because obviously, we need more money for it. So my, my position is, is 240 per BBH inch with a 300-inch per acre cap, and, you know, as, as you are, and I, and I, I think that just looking at the numbers, I think that's a very fair number. And unless, unless, you know, you come back later and say something, you know, have a very legitimate legal reason, I, I would say that, that, I would, I would hope that the rest of the council would support me in that direction.
What you're, what you're describing, Councilmember Park, is, is defensible in my judgment, but we, we need to, what I need to understand is more specifically where you and your colleagues are on, on the cap number, because that's been a bone of, that's been a bone of contention in the comments to the ordinance that, and we need council direction about what that needs to be.
And I propose $240 per inch, which is Atlanta, and then the cap be 300 inches per acre. That is, that is my stake in the ground.
All right.
I'd support that.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that clarity.
Anyone, everyone else, Madeline said yes.
I support that as well.
I support that also.
Joe, everyone, all supported.
So, and I just want to talk about this, you know, one of the, the points that I'm getting, and I want to talk about this very clearly, so, so that, for those that are watching, we can have these questions plainly answered, rather than having to go through the code. It looks like we won't get the, you know, at, at least a notification that a tree's coming down, and, you know, so I'm satisfied with that. So the other bone of contention is, I just want to make sure, is that, you know, in the ordinance, it says that, you know, rights of way are exempted, and I understand why that is, because we don't want to, you know, have, have to have the city go through the zoning board, Board of Appeals, to be able to remove a specimen tree in the right of way when we need to go to sidewalk, or, you know, and there are no options to go around it, or meander, or go over it. Are we going to have something in the code, though? But we, council is giving clear direction that any trees that are removed, and, and I will defer to Jeff's, Jeff's judgment, I mean, it doesn't have to be inch for inch, but some sort of replacement canopy that in a reasonable number of years, it will replace the canopy that has been taken by, you know, that, that work we did in the right of way. Is it codified in the ordinance that that, that is happening, that is required, or is this based, still based on, on a general council direction?
It's not drat, in the, that way, and Chris, I'll rely on you, but I don't think that that's the appropriate place to put it necessarily either. That's, Chris, I'll let you respond to that.
Or, I mean, we as, the administration, let me put it that way, the administration has taken the position that when it comes to our zoning ordinance, our building ordinance and our life safety code, the city holds itself accountable to those codes like it does any other private entity. We are strictly legally speaking, not bound by our zoning code or our building code. We don't have to go get permits to build a building, or to change, or to perform a construction project, but we go get those permits anyway, because we want the city and the people who pay attention to the city to understand that we hold ourselves to the same standards that we hold private people. So what I understand you to be asking, Councilmember Park, is akin to the same kind of enforcement and compliance policy that the administration has previously pursued. If you want that to exist in the tree ordinance, regardless of who the leadership is at the administration, then codifying it is an appropriate place to make that clear. The problem, or the concern that I would raise with you concerning how that gets done and how that gets enforced arises from, from what you described as not necessarily inch for inch, because we hold everybody else to inch to inch. So if there, if we're not going to hold ourselves to that same standard, then we don't want to codify that same standard, because we would not have the same flexibility that you're describing.
So would it be a problem, Jeff, if we went to inch for inch replacement?
Um, so I guess to clarify a little bit, the, the current ordinance, as well as the, the draft that's on the website right now, it doesn't technically, it's inch for inch when you're into the specimen tree removal section. It, it doesn't technically cover inch for inch replacement for any tree that's not a specimen tree. However, I think there is a way to codify it. Where it gets tricky is, let's just take Briarwood, where it is very likely some specimen trees will have to be removed for that 10-foot multi-use pathway. If you just remove a few of those, you're getting into the 70 to 80-inch range, and to go back in with two and a half inch to, let's say, four-inch caliper trees as replacements, to tick off appropriate spacing, soil volume, et cetera, to get all those inches back in there, inch for inch, could be tricky to do, giving, given all the other constraints that come along with planting trees in right-of-way spaces, where you have overhead utilities, underground utilities, concerns with root damage over time to newly installed infrastructure, so on and so forth. So I, I think there's a way to, there's a way to address it in the code, and I think, you know, it would be wise to just coordinate tightly with Public Works to, to figure that But once you're getting into the removal of big trees on a site, the inch for inch thing can get pretty tricky.
So, this came up a couple meetings ago, and Public Works was, has it on their agenda to come back to you all on, you know, tree replacements in the right of way. I think that's a policy that can be outside of the tree policy, because the right of way is so much different than a normal development site, whether it be a city park or a residential site. So I would prefer the discussion of replacing trees that are taken out of the right of way than done outside of the tree ordinance, because I think the type of land development disturbance is uniquely different.
But it is something that we can't codify.
Definitely. I mean, I was envisioning that while they may not go right back in the right of way someplace, they would go on a park someplace. We've got plenty of places we could plant trees.
Right.
The inch for inch, right of way issues, I just don't think it works well in the tree, the tree ordinance as the policy.
So I'd, I'd like to see a policy, and I'd like to see it codified, and, and if you want to separate it out into a separate effort, I'm fine with that, but I, I think council, council is giving very clear direction, and if another council down the line wants to do that, I want them to have to go and put forth a ordinance to change it. I don't, I don't want them to, you know, just be in a work session, well, I, I think it's, anyways, that's just the pain, let's just get rid of that, and, you know, not and done. I'd like it, I'd like us to formally implement that, and I think it's clear on what the council wants, because I think we made it clear the other day, in the other meeting, you know, codify that, so that, so that it's, 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 it's more than just a general council direction, and it's, and it's clearly measured. So I'm fine with that, as long as, you know, I, I trust staff to come back, I think you understand what we want, to implement that, that policy or ordinance, and I, and I would hope that my fellow council members support that.
Understood.
Yeah, lovely.
All right, thank you. John, were you done?
No, I can come back, I have a list, so, I don't want to monopolize your time, you can, you know, so go ahead.
So, um, I, I just wanted to confirm that with regard to the signage that is being
worked on, the signed notification of tree removal, that it will be significant signage. We had talked about, you know, the, the large yellow signage boards that city of Sandy Springs, I believe it is, puts up to notify all neighbors and passersby of a tree removal, as opposed to a little permit hanging in the window, which I think we, we've all indicated we would like to abandon. So specifically, do you have any more specifics about what signage is being contemplated?
Go, go ahead, Jeff.
Um, so we, we have, we have a mock-up. Can everybody see that?
Yeah, push it back further, because it's so big, they can't, it fills the whole screen.
So the idea with this is the, the bright green official Brookhaven sign, similar to the yellow variant signs, are staked in the yard, whatever is decided upon, day or days of work, three days in advance, whatever that is. It's a notification to the public, the font is big enough to where it's visible, you know, from your car on the street. You don't have to technically access the site to be able to read the bigger font on the sign, but then embedded within the sign here is the actual eight and a half by 11 official permit that's printed and issued by the city that specifies the exact scope of work.
Okay, great, and, and the only addition I might have to the sign, and maybe it's just too much to put on there, is a reference to consulting the project's portal viewer, because that's where people can really easily just hop on and see the details of the tree removal, right?
Right, so if you, with this number here, which, this is exactly how we're going to assemble every one of these, this is the permit number, again, I mean, everybody might not have the eyesight to be able to read that from across the street, however, it's, it's large enough to where, you know, if you're relatively close enough to the sign, you'll be able to grab this permit number here and look it up in the system.
Okay, okay, that'd be fine. And so have we then abandoned the notion of actually marking the tree on site with a yellow ribbon or otherwise?
Yes, that, based on our staffing levels and the number of projects that we're processing, in permits that we're processing, really is not feasible for us to, to mark each individual tree.
Oh, okay, I guess I had assumed that the marking of the tree would be a requirement of the applicant, that they would have to, you know, wrap the tree with the yellow ribbon, or, you know, much, much is certain, there are certain requirements for builders to display their building permits and so forth.
Ultimately, we still would be having to issue to the, the builder or developer the tape, because we would be, the city would be ordering a specific tape that said Brookhaven tree removal, and so we, we would be, again, e- even if we weren't doing the marking individually ourselves, that still would be staff time to go through all of the applications that we receive to be able to provide that to the builder. Be much more than just issuing them this sign, which is more lines of the construction hour sign that we, we have issued in the past.
To, to elaborate a little bit, like, when, when we review and approve a tree removal permit, on, I know it's too small to read, but we actually define what the permitted scope of work is down to this level of detail, like for this one, which is an actual permit that was issued, permitted scope of work, removal of one tree, one 19-inch hardwood, typically we'll even identify the species and where it is in the yard, front left corner of the yard. So we're that specific. And if, if someone who wanted to know looked up that permit number, they could see that, or if they had the time to actually just walk all the way up to the sign, they could see, you know, that, that higher level of detail as to what the permitted work is. From what I've seen, I'll, I'll just go ahead and put this out there, from what I've seen, if, you know, the reputable tree companies, of which most of, you know, most of the ones operating in Atlanta are, they know, they know that they are not to do any tree removals on a site, not just in Brookhaven, but most jurisdictions in metro Atlanta have similar tree removal requirements. They know that they cannot do a thing until they have that permit, whether they've obtained the permit, or the applicant, or the homeowner has obtained the permit. They know that they have to see it before they do anything. The, the culprits, the, the problem are the, the fly-by-night companies. It's the companies who are, you know, just moving forward with their work without any concern about obtaining a permit and what the tree removal requirements are for whatever jurisdiction they're working in. So I think with this sign out here, it's almost like, I won't say a guarantee, but you've got some pretty good blanket coverage for, okay, I see a tree company clearly removing a tree or some trees in that yard, however, there's the official Brookhaven sign with the permit.
Thank you, Jeff.
I, I have a question about that, three days in advance, what's the penalty if they fail to put it out there three days in advance, and are, are staff having to confirm that, too?
Staff is not encouraging the three to five-day notice. It will be difficult for us to monitor that, particularly because of the way the tree companies operate. Again, we're, we're looking at this sign as, as the same, would, would be in the similar situation with the construction hour sign, until they're ready to get out on the site, we wouldn't have a way to really enforce that. The other thing, well, I'll just leave it there, and if you all have any additional questions about it.
Okay, and then, okay, so if there's not, in advance, the other question was if you had a dead tree situation, where you, you know, where you're, you know, having to remove a dead tree, and you get the dead tree permit, if there's no advanced warning, I was concerned that, you know, someone who had a dead tree is having to delay, you know, days as we're removal, which I think is kind of counterproductive.
Well, there, there's a couple of concerns here, Mayor. The first one is, as I mentioned earlier, there's nothing in the code that allows anybody to appeal or to interfere with the removal of a tree. So I'm not entirely sure what benefit that there is to providing that additional notice or providing notice of any kind. You know, if the person's got the permit, then they've got the permit, you know, the, and if a tree's coming down and code enforcement's called, and the roll up, and there's somebody taking a tree down without a permit, we'll handle that as a code enforcement matter. But the, you know, we, we have dealt with, and the city has experience dealing with people who are in to self-help in these circumstances, despite the fact that we get called names for doing that. So the, the challenge that Patrice's shop and I'm having with the notice, or the demands for prior notice is, what's the point? If there were due process issues, or appeal issues, or some basis upon which somebody could have checked, I might have a different perspective, but it seems I might have a different perspective, but it seems at this point you're, the, the, the call for notice is creating, um, additional headaches and burdens on staff without there being a particular, um, remedy that's being provided or offered to address whatever the, the concerns might be either of the public or of the council.
I, I think the point is that if you see a green sign, you know it's okay to take down the tree. And if you don't, then you call the code enforcement or the police and say, hey, stop them from kind of the tree down. I think that's the point. So, you know, I, I don't buy that.
We did, uh, if, I'll go ahead and throw something out there. So we were just trying to work out the logistics, uh, you know, for staff as to how this whole thing was gonna be managed, from issuance to cost to getting the signs back, every little thing. Um, and in our last meeting, we decided to, when, when, um, Alexandra actually issues the permit, they're part of, part of what she sends out to the applicant is kind of this automated, language that she really can't modify, but part of it we can make some changes to. And we decided to basically go ahead and communicate to the applicant who's, who's being issued an approved tree removal permit, that failure to, to comply with this new requirement will be considered an unpermitted tree removal and will be addressed accordingly, which is to say, you can be issued a court summons for an unpermitted tree removal. So it's, it's a way to, it's a way to hopefully get better compliance with this. And, and the goal of this is just to communicate to everyone, code enforcement, land development, the public, you all, that if you see a free removal on a property, um, it's been, it's been permitted, it's been approved.
Hey, I think Joe had a question.
Yeah, I'll do this, try to do this quickly. Uh, thank you. Jeff, um, is it possible to make the sign bigger?
Um, I, I, of course, you know, the, the cost of God, this is, this is 20 by 24.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's, you know, so it's bigger than a campaign sign. It's, it's twice the size of your average campaign sign, sign plus or minus. So, I'm, of course, it's an option, um.
Anything that makes, I, I, these questions I'm asking right now are gonna be based, basically around transparency, what we're doing as a city. And if we can make it more readable, um, let's get it from the get-go. I'm in favor of a larger sign, just to really make sure the message is being communicated clearly and efficiently to as many people as possible, depending on the distance from where it's put into where somebody may be looking at it. We have a chance to do it one way or the other from the get-go. So that's a recommendation I put forth. I'll ask council, you think that that's necessary? Don Lindley?
I, it's just as big as our, uh, you know, sign that says, you, you know, you have to close at seven or all that, right? It's the same size, it's that standard.
It is?
I mean, that's pretty, uh, that's pretty big. I mean, I, I see it every time I, I, I walk by, so, I mean, it's as big as that, I think, it's fine. And plus, I like the fact that it has its own branding, it's green, so.
Yeah, I do too.
People, 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 when they see it out of the corner of their eye, they'll know what it is. I think, you know, as, as, as people get used to it.
Lindley?
I agree, John.
Okay, uh, listen, on this issue of taping the trees, um, I'm, I'm not, I'm not really convinced by the arguments that I've had, I've heard posted. I think, and Jeff, you know this as well as I, Patrice, you, when DeKalb County comes over to the envoy and, uh, the enclave rather, and they wanna cut trees, they tape those trees. So when you walk in, it's a real visible. It's very, very clear, there's no doubt what this, what the status is of what's being cut down. And I think that's, that makes a really loud, a loud statement. And that, to me, I think is the, is from a transparency statement, is the most visible way to really make a statement to lessen the shock of what's, what could, what could happen. And we know that usually there will be a shock factor. So I'm still in favor of pushing forth and saying, yeah, put the responsibility on the tree removal agency to put it around. Let's just provide the tape. Now, if that's too much manpower, um, I, I, I don't think that that's a, that's a legitimate argument. And I'm gonna put-
Oh, I'll, I'll speak for the administration. You know, we've made our recommendation, but we'll obviously follow the lead of the council. If the council wants tape, we'll do the tape.
John Lindley, Madeline? Any comment?
Tape, tape this later.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Uh, first, uh, Patrice, proceed accordingly and just document the cost, both on the materials and on the staffing, as well as any de- definite feedback you get from the vendors out there having to make a trip to City Hall to get tape.
Um, and if, if, if I can ask for just a point of clarification on the sign is still requesting or recommending the, the prior notice? And what, how many days are, is council recommend for that?
I'm in favor of five.
I agree.
I'm honestly fine with three.
Well, what, what about the, uh, dead tree issue? I mean, cause I, I, we have-
Maybe that needs to be broken out, John, separately. When you talk about dead trees or trees leaning on a house after a storm, maybe those, those are exceptions from this rule.
Right.
A-
This tree be an exception. And, and to circle back for a quick, the tape, um, if, if it is expensive or daunting for people to come to City Hall to pick up the tape, we could just specify plastic tape. It's, you know, surveyors will use different colors of plastic tape. Um, they're readily available and they, they mark the corners of lots and so forth. And we could just specify, for example, a, a two-inch yellow plastic tape, something like that, um, be wrapped at a certain height around the tree. That would s- address the concern that they don't want to have to come to City Hall to pick it up. And it would also save us the expense of purchasing it.
They, um, so just logistically, you know, the idea here is the applicant, which we want to be the property owner, um, they already are gonna have to come to City Hall to pick this up. Um, we, we don't deliver it to them. After the tree work, all they're required to do is go back out in the yard, turn it around this way. There's a Brookhaven sticker right here that indicates to code enforcement, us, anybody who's out and about to go ahead and please grab that sign and bring it back to City Hall. I, I guess my question is if, um, wha- what is, what is the tape communicating? Like what, what do y'all feel like the additional advantages of having the tape?
I guess though you yelled that four days in advance instead of afterwards.
It's a visual, Jeff. If you're, if you're gonna be listing on that little eight and a half by 11, somebody's gonna have to up, up and read. And it's a house being put in and we, and we know that there's gonna be a good number of trees taken down. People can see a sign up, but there's no real feeling for what that means. If you look at the sign, you pick your head up, you see the tape around the trees, you know what's happening. There's no doubt. Well, part of the transparency and part of this.
I agree. Transparency goal.
Well, since we're increasing fees and all, we'll just attach, roll the tape to every sign and just give it to the applicant.
Now, when you're doing it too, you know how many inches the tree is. Double it in size for tape. I, I mean, if, if it's an issue with how much tape you give it away in a row.
Yeah, do we want staff time measuring?
No, I'm just saying.
We'll just, with this, I mean, we, we can get this done.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, the point being is, you wanna have as much transparency as possible. You know, the extreme case is someone out there waving a flag saying, hey, we're ready to take a tree down. We're gonna just have to write this in a fashion that not only does they have to have a permit within five days, but they have to install that tape within five days. And then we have to go out and check and make sure that tape's installed in five days. And it's on the right tree within five days. So we'll make it happen, we'll write up the procedure and probably give you a report back in future work session, how it's going.
Thank you.
So, the next- Get some clarification on one thing. Are, are you all asking this to be done for, um, standalone tree removal permits and developmental tree removal or just standalone tree removal permits?
The, the other question too will be, is the concern primarily single-family residential or larger, um, multifamily and commercial projects as well? We'll need to know that distinction, um.
Well, with regard to the larger projects, my experience is that they're marking the trees anyway. They're marking the trees, the developers marking the trees. So when the tree service comes, they know what trees they're taking down. So for example, and, and we do it as a city too. I mean, we've marked trees at Ashford Dumity and Johnson Ferry. We've marked trees at Ashford Dumity and Peachtree. We, we mark the trees more than five days in advance typically. And that's when I start to get phone calls and inquiries and people can, can get answers and, and feel that transparency. So I, I think on the larger projects, um, that yes, it should apply, but I suspect it, it won't really be an issue for them because seems that they do it anyway. And then, um, I, it really needs to apply to all tree removal to make any sense. If the point is to provide transparency and notification to the community about tree removal, um, then, then it needs to apply to all. And, and I do believe, um, that it will result in the occasional tree save as well. Because I, I think that when people, um, see certain trees coming down, it could, it could spark conversations in the community. It could spark conversations on Nextdoor, it could spark conversations between neighbors about tree canopy, tree save, et cetera. Um, so I, I do think it serves an important purpose and, um, but that's how I feel about it. I would ask my fellow council members how they do.
When that seed fell and that tree decided to grow, it didn't say, I'm gonna plant here because this is gonna be a residential property or we planted it here because it's gonna be commercial. So a tree is a tree regardless of where it is. And I think all trees qualify.
I agree.
I was supposed to get a laugh on that one, I didn't even get it.
Yeah.
Um, real quick, uh, Patrice, what is the penalty if a company doesn't do this?
Um, it would fall within our normal enforcement, um, requirements, which, uh, is a thousand dollars per day per violation. And it would be up to the municipal court.
Can we do a mass send out to the tree removal companies, say, in a five-county area around us or whatever would be a reasonable area? And in it, what the penalty is that we just reviewed? So it's clear what our, what our standards are and then what the consequences are if you don't do it. Because our fear is these, uh, renegade companies that just come in and they send out these mailers and they blow through a neighborhood and they blow out. At least to have it on notice. And if they do show up, we're on record for having provided the notice. Okay, next.
We, we amended, we amended your code, um, early last year, uh, at the request of your judges to pull out of the code all of the various individual sentencing provisions and just have a single, um, uh, sentencing provision in the, in the ordnance, code of ordinances entirety. So the community, the, the greater community is on notice, both from us and from, uh, state law generally, what the vi- what the maximum violation is for, uh, or what the maximum penalty is for violation of a municipal ordinance. I don't know that we accomplished very much by sending, um, an additional mailer out to folks. People who are gonna break the law are gonna break the law. I mean, there, there's not anything that we can accomplish, uh, uh, anything further we can accomplish with these companies than, than what we're already doing by giving voice to the council's policy choices, um, with the ordinance that we're writing. So, um, I hear your concern, Councilmember Gabby. I'm just trying to make sure that, that the harm you're trying to prevent is adequate, i- is actually addressing a, a problem over which we have any control.
I'd hate to have some of these people come into town not knowing. They may be outside of DeKalb County and outside, definitely outside of Brookhaven, and not knowing. It reduces that element of possibility. And if a 55-cent stamp and, and, and it's signed to send out a one-time letter, or however we tr- we decide to communicate that, could, I think it's important to put the message out and to put it out to the people who are gonna be performing the duty. Uh, that's just a point of view. I'll, I'll again ask for advice from my fellow council members.
For, for our large projects like this, we, um, do electronic communications to all of our contacts that are, um, applicants or, um, builders or developers. So they'll get the message to those that are already in our listserv, so.
Well, I was thinking more about the tree removal companies that come in and perform the duty.
Right, then they would be included in that group.
All right, if you feel comfortable, we got the base covered on that. I'm prepared to yield.
Are, are we gonna require like LPRs at the site so that we can tell when the bad tree companies bolt out into the night and we can never find them, we could track them down and hunt them like dogs? Um, because we're, um, because we're gonna need to do that too at some point. So, because we have all these bad tree companies that cause most of the issues that, so how are we gonna, how are we going to, uh, punish them? And, uh, drag them into court? Cause if, because I'm just concerned we're gonna have, we're having all these regulations that, um, that for most people are gonna, you know, the bad actors we're really concerned about aren't gonna be touched by this. And so what, what, we're, we're, we're going on a very, a slope here that, in which we're gonna punish basically everyone's gonna follow law, but the, we're gonna have the same reaction when the, uh, negative happens, which is gonna happen in the exact same way it happens now. So I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering how, what are we doing to really try to, you know, what problem are we trying to solve or, or what, you know, how are we gonna track down the bad actors?
I think that once the, I, I think that once people understand what is required for the legal removal of a tree, the city will be contacted as, as soon as a bad actor shows up and starts cutting a tree without it being marked and without a green sign in front of the house or the property. So, you know, it, it may be too late to save the initial cut, but they, they, I think we'll learn in quick order that the citizens of Brookhaven are the watchdogs of our canopy.
Well, Councilwoman Jones, I, I don't, a- as the administration has, has said repeatedly, we will of course do whatever the council directs as far as, uh, drafting this is concerned. But I think the, the mayor's point in, i- is really the, similar to the one I was making a, a few moments ago. And that is, eh, while the intention, as, as I understand the, the council's intention, the goal here is to prevent folks with, who wanna be, uh, who wanna perform self-help or who wanna hire somebody who just shows up with a chainsaw and a pickup truck from cutting down trees. And, and I get that. The problem is, is that those folks are gonna be gone or they're gonna come into council meetings that you've sat through yourself and call the council names for doing what you think is the right thing to do. I personally don't really enjoy those kinds of meetings. Um, unfortunately, we've not had one in quite a while. Some part of that is because of COVID, some part of it is just because, um, the council's policy have proven to be accurate. But the, 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 the standards that you're setting and that what you're asking for from my chair with, when there's no other remedy other than a criminal violation and there's no right of the next-door neighbor to tell the person across the street or the person next door to them, hey, we don't like the fact that you're taking this tree down. There's no, um, process to which they would be entitled to change that outcome. There's a little bit of, uh, of a remedy looking for a problem that's being discussed here. Just, and I mean that with, with all respect, because I understand what you're struggling with and I understand what you're trying to accomplish, or at least I think I do. But on some level, where I think we've sort of, um, moved past, uh, move, move to a place where, where what you're trying to accomplish sort of, um, creates more problems than it solves is in this circumstance where we are, um, trying to fix a problem over which we can't exercise control.
I, I suggest that, um, we're hearing, you've gotten the sentiment from a couple of us. Um, and we've now received professional advice from both community development and from legal. And I think it would be appropriate at this time to accept- And I think it would be appropriate at this time to accept your comments. Relieve ourselves of this consideration temporarily and monitor this. If it proves to be a problem, we can readdress. Does that sound like a fair response, Chris?
Yeah, I I appreciate the courtesy, Councilman. I don't want to tell you your business because it's not my place. My my job here is to try to outline where the ditches are on either side of the road and keep you out of the ditch. I don't think you're all the way in the ditch yet, if I can beat my analogy to death, but I am concerned that where you're headed is to drive it, drive it into the ditch. And if you, if what, what you're willing to do is to let us start with the plan as proposed by community development and their consultant and by Jeff, then I think we can determine from the implementation of the plan as proposed whether or not additional steps are necessary. And that's kind of, that's my preference. That's obviously not a vote, not, I don't have a a say in the ultimate answer to that, but that's this lawyer's preference.
But that, or or there has to be a process on the back end to for appeal. We go down the Atlanta route of an appeal process, which is not recommended, or has it not been recommended?
It it is not recommended for a host of reasons, the majority of which have to do with, um, expense and lack of actual success in Atlanta, since I live here and deal with that that ordinance on a regular basis.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to. Uh, John, Park, you were going?
So we are going to put the sign out, right, that green sign, that that Jeff. I mean, as long as that's out three days before, I'm I'm happy, because that just clearly delineates what is a, uh, you know, that that is, it's a lawful tree removal. If you don't see the sign, it's not lawful, and you can call the cops. I I think, I think that's simple, and I think, uh, I think the the, 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 the culture of Brookhaven will 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 enforce that. You know, as long as, as long as you see that green sign, like, whoa, 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 no green sign, tree taken down, nine-one-one. It's that simple. So as long as we do that, I'm satisfied.
So is that, are we removing the tape issue? In your mind?
I I I mean, I I I don't mind the tape, but I'm I'm not, I know. Uh, but I'm not like, I I'm not adamant about it. If if y'all want to do tape, the rest of the council wants to do that, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, Madeline, I see you off speaker.
Yeah, um, thanks. I I'm in favor of the tape. Um, and I think that we've been throwing around three and five days, and I'm in favor of five days. But if the, you know, overall consensus is three, I'm okay with that, too.
Lillian.
I'm in favor of five days and tape.
Okay, well, we actually aren't, this is more of a presentation. Uh, we're not in, uh, final discussion on this one. Um, I think we go around around circles a little bit on this. Is there anything other matters?
We have two more points, John, please.
Sure, go ahead, Joe.
Uh, Patrice, um, on the portal, when a permit is posted for review, is it a running, running log of all the permits until such time as they expire?
No, the project portal viewer displays permits that have been issued within the last ninety days.
So, so so there is a whole complete running list within the last ninety days?
Correct.
Is it separated out? Like, would just tree removal permits be blocked as one category?
Yes, standalone tree removal permits are a separate category that doesn't, um, cover, obviously, tree removal. That is a part of another permit type of building permit or Atlanta servants permit.
Hmm. All right, last question. Jeff, this is to you. So if we're doing an inch by inch replacement, say, up to two hundred inches, and you're doing them in two, two and a half inch caliber trees, replacement, uh, provided there's enough space, the actual advantage of doing that in five or ten years, when these trees approach maturity, they would have increased the actual tree canopy by an X factor because you've replaced one for one at the at the get-go, but in five years, that tree is going to grow beyond. It's going to be well beyond what the original tree was. Is that not a true, uh, uh, analysis of this?
Um. I think there's more factors that have to be put into that equation. So what's your actual plantable area within that site? Um. And that'll determine what your appropriate spacing is, what your available soil volume is. Uh, you have to factor in soil quality, which I know, uh, I've spoken, you know, with mayor and, uh, at least some of the council members about, uh, how to address that potentially within the tree ordinance. And then, of course, species. So in a way, you're right. If if you're playing, if you could max out your printing, um, and, you know, tick off all those boxes, especially soil quality, which is one of the most undervalued things in in your average tree ordinance, something that we've definitely tried to better address with ours. I think you could, over probably not five years, but, um, twenty-five years down the road, you could, you could net a gain versus what was removed.
All right, thanks for that. I'm done, John. Thank you.
Okay, uh, the only thing I have on the sign is, uh, Q R O code. Um, I know that they have, you know, put this for the portal, the right there on the sign, uh, with, uh, COVID, everyone using it for their menus for restaurants, people are using the Q R O code a lot more, I found. Um, and so if it's, if it's printed on, it goes just directly to the portal, uh, so that a person can type in the the, uh, link number and they'll know immediately. I think, I think that could possibly work. I see, I see some shaking of heads. I think that's.
I like that idea. I think that's great.
Okay. Okay, uh.
May I ask?
Yeah.
Excuse me, um, Councilman Park, do we need to schedule staff time with you to go over the rest of your concerns? I know we didn't, I don't believe we got to everything you wanted to ask about.
You're not mute, you're on mute, you're muted.
All right, so, but we're, are we going to have another work session?
That's going to be my recommendation to the administration. Yes, sir. I don't think, I don't think you're done with this, but that's just.
No, I'm not, I'm not done with this. Let let me, let me schedule staff time and then let's have another work session on this. And then two weeks later, uh, we can, we can, um, we can have a, uh, a regular meeting vote, but I would like another work session on this.
Yeah, I feel like we're, we're way down, we're down the weeds or the, yeah, very much so, and this is just one little aspect of it.
Yeah, and and I can, I can refine, I have, I have a lot of points, but I can refine those and get clarification on before we have the more focused discussion at another work session. Um, and then, and then we can give direction for the final, final vision.
Okay. Uh, with that, um, I thank you guys for, I'm going to close off tree rewrite, and we'll, we'll all come back to this again. Okay, moving on to neighborhood sign topper presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Don Sherwood won't be joining us tonight, but Tom Roberts is going to do the presentation. For background, you'll recall, uh, uh, prior District Three Representative Bates Madison asked about this uh, last year, I think even pre-COVID, it's something we started to look into. Uh, and then there was another request to look at our actual signs and such. Uh, the case came back up again with, uh, a focused request coming out of Drew Valley, so that gave us some urgency here. And with that, I will turn it over to Tom Roberts, Deputy Director of Public Works. Thank you, Tom.
Good evening. Thank you very much. So we're going to get into, can you see the PowerPoint presentation there?
No, it, uh, share screen, it's not up yet.
There you go. It's starting to share. Perfect.
All right, so community signs within Brookhaven or, uh, otherwise known as street sign toppers. Uh, we're going to find some inquiries about streets on toppers and and how to go about having a program to do this. So we've done some research around the country, uh, looked at the signs that we have and, uh, and talked to some people, and so we've, first I'm going to go through and, um, excuse me. Give me just a moment, my PowerPoint's not moving for me. Okay. Uh, so we're going through the community and neighborhood statistics, showing what we already have here in the city. Uh, and give you some, show you some examples of things that seem to work pretty well and some that maybe don't work as well as they, they could. We've come up with some guidelines that we recommend, uh, be considered. And then we've, uh, taken, uh, Drew Valley and looked at, at an estimated cost to go in and do the Drew Valley community. So with that, we'll move into, uh, just a summary of the neighborhoods and communities. So we've got twenty-eight different communities within the city, uh, and and that is two hundred and thirty-seven different neighborhoods. One hundred and thirty-five of those are private, uh, or two of those are public. Uh, we've got a breakdown per district as well as, uh, for communities and and the different neighborhoods within each of those. So, uh, and we're going to go through, uh, each of the districts a little bit more detail, but District One, it's got nine different communities with seventy-seven different neighborhoods. And we, District Two has got six with thirty neighborhoods. Uh, the others are are pretty much even out with with District One for the most part. So, community signs, uh, there are seven communities, uh, communities that have double-sided signs. Uh, and as you can see here on the next slide, they're attached to the topless street signs or or stop signs. Uh, and the, these seven are Murphy Keller Park, Sexton Woods, Stewart, Brookhaven, Ashford Park, uh, Brookhaven Fields, Brookhaven Heights, and La Vista Park. And some of the signs are very similar, some have some differences between them. Uh, and so we've, we've got some things that we we like and we recommend, some things that that we probably like to stay away from. So in District One, th- this is the Murphy Keller Park District, um, ma- community. We've got, uh, we have, uh, Nancy Creek Heights, uh, but only at Coney Pass and Ashford, Dunwoody Road have signs on them. Uh, Gaysborough West, every intersection has, has a sign. Uh, Dunwoody Terrace is at every entrance, at the entrance. Murphy Keller Park, not all the community has sign toppers. They're only found along Ashen Tree, uh, Bonnington Court, Cannon Lake East and West, uh, at those, at, uh, a few intersections. Uh, Regency Park is private, uh, and that's just at the entrance. But so we've, we've kind of got a, a mismatch of of signs right now and how how they are, uh, distributed throughout each community and each neighborhood. And just to, uh, provide some clarity, when we talk about communities, we're talking about a larger area and we'd equate the neighborhoods to, uh, individual subdivision, uh, size type of, uh, neighborhood. So, uh, this is Sexton Woods is the only area within Sexton Woods community that has signs. So, uh, in total, there are five public and and one private neighborhood in Sexton Woods community, but just Sexton Woods itself has sign toppers. In District Two, Ashford Park, three of the public neighborhoods and one private neighborhood have sign toppers in Ashford Park. And each of these has got its distinct, its own distinctive look, but they're, they're relatively similar in size and and shape. Uh, with the exception of Brookhaven Fields here, which is just a rectangular sign, but, uh, the only public neighborhood in Brookhaven Fields that has, that has sign toppers. There's six private and one public neighborhood that don't have the toppers right now. One thing that we found during our research and and doing some inspections is these, the green lettering on on the white background, the green lettering doesn't seem to hold up as well, and it seems to have some maintenance, more maintenance issues. And so when we get down to the recommendations, we're going to, we'll have some recommendations about, how we'd like to move forward with, uh, new signs. In District Three, Historic Brookhaven, there's fourteen neighborhoods here, but only six of them have community signs. There are nine public and, uh, five private neighborhoods, and a lot of the signs in this neighborhood also are in worse shape. And again, we've got white signs with the green lettering. So we found this to be a, you know, relatively consistent issue, uh, and it's just, as we're moving forward, we have things to think about. We're getting heights of both of the public and private neighborhoods in Brookhaven Heights, uh, participate, and every intersection in this community has a sign topper. The neighborhoods are about Brookhaven Heights and Valley Brook, private neighborhood. We moved to La Vista Park. Um, there are thirteen neighborhoods in La Vista Park, five of them are public and eight of them are private. And four of the public neighborhoods have signs, sign toppers, and four of the private have sign toppers. The community signs are at every intersection, so the community signs are at each of the intersections within those, uh, neighborhoods. So inside the neighborhoods that that have them, they're very welcome. So really, the purpose of this is to help communities be recognized by their unique characteristics. And, uh, and we definitely have different characteristics. You saw on some of the signs that they, uh, had the established, the established, uh, dates. Uh, and then some of them have their own little logos that that, uh, residents, uh, have come up with over the past. So there's unique things that that distinguish each one of these neighborhoods, uh, and and the character of them. So the other purpose, the other thing that we really, uh, find useful is it increases the visibility of of the communities to non-residences. And so it, uh, if we have this consistent feel, it 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 brings the entire community of Brookhaven together with these, these smaller community areas. It encourages a sense of belonging, community pride, and, uh, like I said, compliment other community development efforts. So as we move forward, uh, we would recommend that only recognized neighborhoods, um, or homeowner associations, whose home, names and boundaries are unlikely to change and whose names are recognized, uh, would be qualified to apply for the sign topper program. Some of our guidelines, um, would be there would be a, an application that submitted to the Community Development Department. We want to have a sketch. Uh, wh- what we want to do is have some general guidelines, but we'd like the communities to be able to, uh, express their own unique, uh, characteristics, and so they've got some, some say in the design of the sign. Uh, but we want to keep a handle on, on the quality that that's produced. So they would propose the the different types of, uh, uh, geometry and the wording that goes on there. And once we approve it, uh, the city would take over the manufacturer and the installation and the maintenance and replacement of those signs. We would like to, uh, uh, avoid having individual homeowners associations, uh, be responsible for that. It it's quality control and a, you know, consistency issue. Uh, this program would be, uh, subject to annual city council funding, and it would be available on a first come, first served basis. So if the budget for the year was, uh, used up quickly, then unless the council came, came back and decided to appropriate more, then that would be, uh, the program would end for that year. Uh. So the sign and sign toppers must adhere to the design and manufacturing guidelines. Uh, just a little bit more, when we're talking about the artwork, the proposed sign needs to be submitted for review by the city. Uh, and again, the cost for the manufacturing of the sign would be incurred by the city. As I mentioned, the installation would be done by Public Works or our contractors. Uh, and we want to. And we want to install them on all of all the street signs in the community that or in the neighborhood that is applied for. And that's just an area for discussions with council is do you address the entire community? Or do you do it kind of like the traffic calming districts that we have where the neighborhood or community would come to get, I'm sorry, the neighborhood would come together and you would address each neighborhood separately? And that would be more in line with kind of how it's organically developed so far. Again, maintenance would be done by Public Works. We'd we would have the authority to remove the place clean at our discretion and as inventory and budget allows. True Valley has come in, they came in with a proposed design. And this one is interesting because it it does a lot of things. It's it's clear who represents, it is an established date. It follows a general the general geometry of the signs that are already present in the community. And the nice touch here is it it says the city of Brookhaven down at the bottom. So we we kind of like this general model for designing the sign. And we don't think there'd be too much pushback since it's pretty consistent with what has already been done. So just to get an idea of what the cost would be here. In Drew Valley, there's forty seven existing street signs, so that would be forty seven sign toppers that would need to be manufactured, installed, and maintained. Right now, just a budgetary cost per sign is two hundred and thirty five dollars. As this program gets going and we we find manufacturers and get it under contract with manufacturers and are buying in bulk, those costs are going to go down. But the overall initial cost, I saw it right now, for installing those signs in Drew Valley would be eleven thousand forty five dollars. Based on our GIS information, there are approximately seven hundred stop signs directly related to neighborhoods within the city. Right now, approximately one hundred and fifteen of them have sign toppers. If to kind of give an idea of what the ultimate cost could could be, that would be assuming that every different neighborhood in each of the communities was interested in having sign toppers provided by the city. And questions, I can take questions tonight, and I'll try and answer whatever I can.
Yeah, Lindley, go ahead.
Thank you. Terrific presentation, Tom. What was the last, what were the last numbers you gave of the total number of stop signs in neighborhoods?
So we have approximately seven hundred stop signs in different related to neighborhoods, so that takes out commercial districts. And of that, we've got about one hundred and fifteen of those have sign toppers on them.
Okay, thank you. And and I I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea for a number of reasons. I I think it actually increases the sense of identity, but the actual identity to outsiders. I I recently had a young friend shopping for a home in Brookhaven, and he he'd ride around and get lost in some of our neighborhoods and not really know where it was that he wanted to buy a house in Brookhaven, because some of our older neighborhoods in particular are really meandering. And even if they have signage at the entrance, by the time you find an area you're interested in, you may not have any idea where you are anymore. So I I like the idea, and I hope a lot of neighborhoods would be interested in this as well. I think we should actually require that in addition to it stating the name of the neighborhood, that it state City of Brookhaven. That's that's important branding for the city. And certainly here in District One, where some of our neighborhoods actually include portions of the neighborhood or in other cities, I think it's important to designate if you're in Sexton Woods City, Brookhaven. And in fact, unbelievably, some citizens don't even know if they're in Sexton Woods City of Brookhaven or Sexton Woods City of Sherwood. So let's clear that up with sign toppers. But I I do think it's a great idea, as long as we're on the topic of maintenance of sign toppers, which you mentioned. We had some time ago had a conversation about actually having a a sweep maintenance of our signs, because we have some really dingy, dirty traffic signs. And it's my understanding from what I believe was a conversation with Christian at the time, was that at a relatively modest cost, we can go through and and just last clean all our signs, power wash all our signs, and have all of that looking terrific, too. So I'd like to throw that out as part of the conversation. Christian?
Yes, we did talk about it before. It's, it should be a citywide maintenance issue, and Harry and Dawn have, we've had discussions about this. Ideally, what we would like to do, at least as it relates to street name signs, is actually to come up with a unified sign style, similar to what you see in Sandy Springs or the PCID that unifies the entire city. And then you can have your separate topper sign for each community. And that way, you know, we can actually bring in the color palette from the 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 CBB and the city's color palette. But that's on the sign design itself that has the street name on it. As it relates to the dinginess, we have people come to us every now and then and say, hey, I'll clean it if you allow me. We're reluctant that on street signs, actual directional signs, because if they use the wrong chemicals on it, it can mess the reflectivity on the the sign itself. We are in the process of inventorying all of our street signs, directional signs, not the ones with named streets on it, to get on a rotation, to get those replaced and or cleaned. But I'm reluctant to tell residents to go out and do it because we're afraid of damaging the signs. Yes, we do have some dingy signs, we have ones with mold on it and that type of thing. But I think we're going to look at it from an overall replacement standpoint versus a mass cleaning, because they are very, very old, they're at least nine years old, because we haven't had a concentrated replacement program since City Hall. But we do encourage anybody, if they think they have a sign, it's not reflective or readable anymore, please make a Brookhaven connect and we can replace the signs or go wash them.
Thank you, Christian.
Okay, anything else? Joe?
Tom, thanks. That was really good. I I really enjoyed it. It's nice that we're getting our arms wrapped around this. So that Drew Valley example being black and white, does that meet your requirement for better performance than the green?
It does. We we found that the black, the black colors seem to pull up better over time through the inventory that we've done. So that would be our recommendation is is to stick with one of those darker color preferably.
Though you're also recommending that that same black and white be the consistent color for every neighborhood throughout the city?
Unless we can find some some reason not to, meaning that the the maintenance would be equal or equally white for different colors, then we, right now, our our preference would be to recommend black and white.
Okay. I would see if there would be alternates, because I think it would be nice if you have one neighborhood on one side of North Druid Hills Road and another neighborhood on the other side, that they have different colored signs to let everybody highlight the fact that you have a different community there. I think it would be nice to have some alterationization there. Does your program also include replacing the current sign toppers that would be out of sync with what this new design is?
That would be a matter for discussion, for further discussion.
So a budgetary request would be, how many are out there, which I think you have that number, two times two thirty five? And then what a total budget would be to do the whole city at two thirty five? How that how that works out? I think there's a real opportunity here to maybe partner with real estate companies to help sponsor this program, because I can see a place in the valley, for example, really getting together as a neighborhood. So for economic development, for economic selling of homes, I think this could be a real thing to come to Drew Valley instead of picking a particular neighborhood and drive that point. And I think there might be real estate companies out there that might be interested in help partnering to help pay off, to pay some of this, if they're provided the right incentive through the neighborhoods to give them credit for it. But that is, I don't know. It's an idea to be, I think, discussed or contemplated that you're in. And I noticed on here, you didn't include the neighborhood of Pine Hills, which is probably one of the largest in the city. And it runs from Buford Highway and North Druid Hills Road over to the Fulton County Line on the south end. And all the way on the north end, it runs right up to where East Roxboro runs into basically Lenox Road. And we probably have, probably potentially could be your largest community with number of neighborhoods. And it could all just be done in far as Pine Hills. So I I would like, I'd like to have that analysis included in your in your report. When you gave the number by district, was it the new district lines or the old district lines?
I can I can tell you those are old district lines.
Okay, but the numbers are still true, just just wanted to make sure. So Madeline, we've got some work we've got to do together for Pine Hills.
So I want to go back to the Pine Hills, since it goes into Atlanta. We just have to make the decision, because obviously we're not going to use taxpayer dollars to put sign toppers in the Pine Hills portion of the city of Atlanta.
Of course. I mean, that's not expected.
Similar to historic Brookhaven, right?
I think that's it. Thanks, Tom. That was really good. I really enjoyed that.
Okay, excellent.
Yes, I'm so excited about this. I'm totally in favor of of what we need to do to to get it done citywide. Thank you, Tom, for the presentation. I'm all in for it. And I know that I've already heard some from community members who are eager to get these kind of signs in their neighborhoods, some of the ones that you, not random ones, yeah.
Well, the takeaway here is we're going to include it in the twenty two budget, but if communities want to pursue this before then on their own dime, we have the guidelines and they can just contact Public Works Department.
Can they do it on a reimbursement basis? If they do it in twenty two?
No, I don't. Neighborhoods don't have enough legal structure to hold a reimbursement accountable.
Gotcha. I'm sorry, Tom, one last question. Well, you had the year of establishment. If the if there's no year of establishment for a community, can they do like a little logo or something they want to do up there instead? As we saw in a number of example signs that you gave us?
Again, I think that would be up to you as a council, but we've already established that precedent, so.
I I would just soon stay with the year of establishment, but in lieu of, just in case. Thank you.
Okay, anything else about sign toppers? Okay, moving on to Dresden Drive LED light conversion. Harry?
Harry, welcome back. I'll tee this up for you, Harry. The council will recall that the Sustainable Brookhaven Strategic Plan includes five elements. One of them is the environment, the second is built environment, the third is financial, the fourth is organization, the fifth is civic governance. One of the commitments we made in the twenty one budget for sustainable Brookhaven was to explore LED light conversion for streetlights. Harry, take it from here. Welcome back.
Thank you. All right, can anybody see my presentation?
We can't, Harry.
Right, good afternoon, good evening, Mayor and Council. So the Dresden, the LED conversion has been, conversion has been in discussion with Georgia Power and and the City Public Works Department since two thousand seventeen or before that. And at the direction of the city manager, we decided to go and do a pilot program for Dresden Drive and see how that is going to work. And I've been working with one of the Georgia Power employees for the the last several years in Dresden. Here it is. So the purpose of this LED conversion is to, part of the city's, this is part of the city's sustainability initiative. And then, you know, also, we can save some money on the long term utility billings. And also, we selected Dresden, since it is a separate cluster of billings and easy to, you know, calculate and see what is the advantage of converting from the regular lights to the LED lights. So on Dresden, there are thirty six street lights there, which has a different wattage, depends on the area of coverage and the location. And then Georgia Power presented us a proposal. And and then we confirmed that. And this is the numbers they gave us on March seventeen. So there is a hundred and twenty two watt, seven lights, fifty three watt, twenty six, eighty three watts, two and hundred and twenty eight watt floodlight. There's one there, and you can see the changes there. So we will be removing two hundred and fifty watt there and installing, you can see the numbers there and go back there. So this, they presented two options for us. Option one is a new monthly fee for the lighting system will be five hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty cents. The current monthly billing for the lighting system is four fifty eight. Upfront cost for the installation is six seventy three. And the option two is, so in the first option, there is no upfront construction fee. You can see the bill billing will go from four fifty eight to five fourteen, and then additional expenses, six seventy three. For the option two, the new monthly fee will be two hundred and eight dollars and forty four cents. And then the current is the same from the option four fifty eight. But the upfront capital cost is going to be twenty one thousand four hundred and six dollars. By reducing the monthly billing, we'll be annual savings should be three thousand two dollars and eighty eight cents. And if you divide that by the savings, it is going to take seven years and two months for us to recover the capital cost. And our recommendation is to go with the option two. The capital cost in the two thousand twenty one will be twenty one thousand four hundred and six dollars. And then we will be saving three thousand dollars from from, once we convert the the from the LED lights. There's a lot more than the capital cost and the savings as a green initiative. As a city, we we're doing a lot of things for the city, and this will be one of the things we are doing. If everything works out well, I think the city will come back to the council and present the other clusters for us. So this is the timeline. I have been in touch with the gentleman. I talked to them, talked to the Georgia Power employee as late as Monday. And we are doing the presentation today. If the council like the option two and approve it today, we will be executing the contract. Georgia Power will be sending us the contract. And then we built some time there. We know that with Georgia Power, it takes some time to get that. So we are planning to get it executed by June fifteenth. And then Georgia Power will start ordering the materials, the maximum of eight weeks. What they would do is they would use what they have on the stock first, and then they will order the ones they don't have it. And then we are expecting to complete the construction by December thirty first. And then the the power bill will be, the new bill will be next year. And that's my presentation. If you have any questions?
No, no questions. I thank you for, I I just, I'll throw out, I also like option two. The city's going to be longer than here, longer than seven years and two months. And I believe LED lighting lasts, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, these streetlights last quite a bit of time, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Correct. It's it's longer than the regular lights.
Yeah, I mean, well, the LEDs last a long time, but even streetlights themselves last a long time.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we were to run the ROI out of a hundred years, the savings would be huge, because the LED lights last so much longer. Also, after we get one year's worth of implementation, it will actually convert the electric savings, in addition to the dollar savings, the electric savings, will convert that into, you know, carbon avoidance and footprint and all of that, just like we do trees. So the double message here, one, we're going to save some money, but two, we'll convert these dollars into what we're actually saving into the amount of carbon we're avoiding.
As Georgia Power's carbon footprint itself goes down considerably. Better.
If there are no other questions?
Questions?
Yeah. On the topic, if the mayor and council will indulge me for a second, Harry, if you'll stay on the line. For folks who don't know, Harry, he's left Brookhaven, but he's still with Low and he's supporting us. So he's spent a good amount of time with us, and we'd like to actually recognize him here in this public meeting for his efforts. And Harry, I'm I'm sorry, we're not able to do this in person, but we have for you a plaque, and it reads uh, Harry, Harry, Karen, with sincere appreciation for your dedication, hard work and enthusiasm and friendship. Best wishes in your new position, your friends and colleagues at the city of Brookhaven. But plaques are plaques, but really what you'll be remembered for, Harry, is what you got done. So what we have here is a golden shovel, uh, because you got shit done and you built a lot of stuff in your tenure here. And the shovel has been signed by all of your colleagues here at uh, Brookhaven City Hall, as well as the council and the mayor. Like I said, I'd love to have done this in person, but we want to recognize you for your contrib- major contributions to the formation of Brookhaven at a very, very critical time. So thank you very much, Harry.
Thank you, Harry.
Hey, Harry.
And you have to come to City Hall to get it.
Yeah. All right, here's your ship it.
I would just like to say, um, Harry, I am so grateful to you and when Christian said, go, go, go on projects in District One, that is what you did, and we have so, so much to thank you for. Um, and I am just so grateful, and the citizens of Brookhaven should be so grateful for everything you have contributed. Thank you, Harry.
I'm just gonna add, Harry, your contributions have been immense. We were under the go-go-go, as Lily just pointed out, and you actually exceeded that. You were beyond our expectation. So it's good to see your face again. Good to see you. I'm glad you joined us today. Congratulations, and we're forever appreciative of your efforts.
Yes, thank you so much. We're so appreciative. You've done so much for the city. Um, congratulations and thank you again.
Yes, thank you. Pretty much everyone else said that. I want to repeat. Definitely, thank you very much.
Yeah, uh, again, Harry, thanks uh, so much. Uh, no, I sat in a lot of those Friday meetings uh, on Friday morning when I walked in randomly. Um, and you and Christian going through all the, all the stuff and it is probably, you know, I realize all the stuff that you, you know, you're going through all the, all the different uh, projects, probably more than the rest of council and other, and obviously other citizens. Uh, was immense amount of stuff that was being done at the time. So again, thanks so much. You want to say anything or you're kind of, you're unmuted? Are you muted, I mean?
Um, yeah, thank you for the opportunity. It uh, was a great four years. Uh, you know, thank you for the support of the 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 mayor, council and the city manager uh, for helping me to get uh, things done there. Yeah, it's a very good opportunity for me.
Thank you very much, Harry. Thank you. Okay. All right, now, thank you. Um, moving on to alcohol ordinance discussion.
Uh, I need direction from council. It is ten minutes of seven, Mr. Mayor, and this is gonna be a much longer than ten-minute conversation. This is an agenda item requested by council member Gabia, but I, and I don't want to just say we don't do it without some direction from someone else.
We're, I mean, we're, I think we're also gonna have a very full next meeting too, which I'm fine with. I mean, moving this to the next one uh, and and filling that meeting up, which we'll do, but um, um, I know that we're, I I know this is a much longer discussion than.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if this is gonna get delayed, a meeting, perhaps we give the district rep a little chip opportunity to T F the issue because it hasn't been mentioned in some while on a public meeting, and maybe Chris just gives a broad framework of the really big tools that are available with your indulgences.
All right, so I'll just try and keep this real quick. You all were privileged to an email previously that basically outlined concerns that I have for what could be um, considerations on how Buford Highway will unfold going forward. And um, I wanted to bring it to your attention, and I really wanted to encourage that we have a very candid conversation about how to address this, and everything and anything is on the table. And uh, my recommendation in our conversation is, modus operandi is what can we do versus what we can't do? So if there's something that isn't legal or something that shouldn't be done in the way it's being recommended, what other considerations can we bring into the equation to achieve the end objective of making sure Buford Highway doesn't proliferate into a late-night establishment arena? And um, that's basically it. Chris, if you want to add anything to that, I'm keeping this to say.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. Um, Councilor Gabia provided um, six areas that he was most concerned with, that we take a look at in in this regard. The first one is hours of operation for on-premises uh, consumption. Uh, he wanted us to have a conversation with his colleagues and and come up with language for whether and how a change to the hours of operations might be considered. Second recommend, uh, area of conversation concerns um, what amendments to the code would be required and what staffing levels would be required to increase the data points that are available for licensed applicants, both on the renewal and on the new applicant side. Um, we have some recommendations with respect to that. It would involve the finance department uh, and to some extent, the uh, administrative section of the police department, but that's largely a, and an area that we can address. Um, security measures are already in the code, which is the next area that the council member suggested we examine. One of the concerns that we have is the city's access to those recordings. Um, and we need to be careful about how we uh, describe and and require that. Enhanced enforcement, uh, those are also issues, obviously, that can be addressed with respect to occupancy levels and those kinds of things. We just have to make sure that we do so um, across all of the businesses and not targeted towards any particular business. Landlord involvement involves lease modification, asking landlords to take proactive steps to hold their lessies accountable. That's a conversation, I think, uh, needs to be held above my pay grade, but it's a conversation that could possibly be initiated through the chamber to talk to landlords about how we address some of the concerns, particularly the safety concerns that we're uh, addressing. And the last area that the councilman asked us to examine is the uh, penalty policies and the ordinance. As the council will excuse me, as the council will no doubt recall, we amended the ordinance uh, in the fall of last year to consolidate and clarify the various penalty app uh, pieces of this. We still are faced with the due process requirements that are in the state code um, that often result in long-drawn-out proceedings uh, and appeals. So some of what uh, we want to talk with the council about is um, what kinds of penalties you're interested in doing, how you want to articulate those, as well as just defining and refining what the state code requires of us and allows uh, to be done. What we may be able to accomplish with respect to the penalty provisions is utilizing our contacts with the Gold Dome to modify the state requirements and to limit the period of time that some of these appeals can uh, drag on. As you recall, with one in uh, business last year, uh, the um, notice of appeal of the denial of their renewal application was filed on the third day of January, and we did not get a final order on that until March of this year. Some of that was related to COVID, some of it was related to the intransigence of the uh, business owner. Um, who just continued to operate without any licenses at all. So part of what we need to have a conversation about is whether the city wishes to invest its capital uh, at the Gold Dome with through its lobbyists and others to um, perhaps get a a change to the wording of the um, local government alcohol enforcement provisions in the code, so that we have more expeditious resolutions of those appeals than we currently are able to accomplish. Those are the primary six topics. Uh, we'll obviously discuss more broadly whatever questions you may have in those areas. But uh, between the Assistant City Manager and CFO, that, and I will, that's where we'll focus our attention.
Okay, well, thank you for that very brief uh, introduction. Um.
All right.
Okay, thanks. No problem. Um, do we have executives?
No, sir.
Okay.
Yes, Linley.
Hold on, real quick, Linley, what?
Well, I, it it of course is within your discretion, Mayor, but um, just speaking for myself, with regard to this summer, we have a couple less sessions than usual, and we have big issues like this to address. And I am open to having a longer work session like we did when we were in person, if we're not in fact back in person, um, so that we're not rushed to important work session issues and we can deliberate. Um, but I just speak, of course, on behalf of, so.
Sounds good. Uh, I'll take that advice, but we'll get that. John? So you know what, opposition, we're adjourned. I'll see you guys in like four minutes.